Like this? I'm get a. You have it right? I don't know.
I'm doing some stuff up here.
He got that word. And then most of you just think.
You might have to pick a different camera.
Yeah, I might have to.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they're looking at your camera.
I'm gonna get people admitted and then. Oh, maybe there isn't anybody. So there was two in the waiting room, but maybe there's not.
Well, then the small camera up top is. Yes, it is.
You select your camera choice.
Yeah, they're both up there now.
I don't have a screen.
Um, I don't know if I can. It tells me there's people in the waiting room too, and I don't see. Well, um, I wonder if I can just if I whoops. If I shut off this camera.
You know, it's not, it's not my.
It's currently the host.
I mean, at this point, there's nobody else on here anyway, so. Yeah, I just, I just turned my camera off. Yeah. So I put a, I put the whole packet in here and then I for you down there and then I tapped the pages that you need to sign. And I'll just.
You know.
Okay. Um. It might, I think he could just. I think he can just cross it off and.
Mikes are working.
Cause there's. There's the, oh, that's the contractor.
My mic's picking up.
Funding agency, is that us? And then on this one, it just says Clay County.
Andy, it wants you to start recording since you're a host up there.
Oh, I'm the host?
Yeah.
This is recording, it says.
Okay.
Well, pause recording, stop recording is the only option that happens.
Okay, well, then it's fine.
We ready them? Yeah, I'm gonna call the meeting to orders. Start with the pledge of allegiance. Over there. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll all.
Butler.
Here.
Brady.
Here.
Easy.
Here.
Gilbertson.
Here. Conflict of interest declarations. I have one on the bid award here at the stream bank stabilization. Anybody else? Hearing the approval of agenda. So moved. Second, I have a motion and a second. Do you need further discussion? Hearing them, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion passes. Proof of minutes. Move to approve. Second, I have a motion and a second. Do you need further discussions? Hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion passes. Uh, visitors to be heard. Ooh, new flat books.
Yeah.
Ooh, it's like Christmas.
Yeah, yeah. Um, just. Okay. We, um, so every year we send off our GIS stat or not every year, it's our beers. We send off our GIS information to farm and home publishers and they put together flat books for sale. And, um, as part of that agreement, they actually work out where they give us printed materials. So. Like Jeffrey said, it's Christmas for y'all and you get twenty twenty five flat books from. The office to receive our home publishers.
Best month.
There you go. Yep. As long as.
Any other visitors? Michael, is it okay if we reserve listeners we heard later, just since we're in the meeting place and somebody might show up later?
Yes, we can.
We'll put that at the end of the meeting, just in case somebody shows up. Uh, Lenz. What were the formally reported? Uh, I believe Kerry sent it out to you. Let me say as always, do you have any questions? I'll be happy to answer.
Pretty straightforward and well written out, so. Is that something we need to formally approve or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I move to approve Wayne's report.
Second. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion passes. Okay, just meet the signature on that. Do you have that?
It's, um, it's marked in the packet if you want to just sign that page.
I can sign it on the computer. Cause I don't have.
Like your printed packet, I saw it down there on the.
Oh, this here, sorry.
Yeah. Each page that could potentially need a signature has a tab, so.
I think I need your signature on it too, Karen.
Yeah. Probably should have left it unstapled, like it was already set that way.
Travis tuned the state law, it's okay.
Is Brad on? Do we know?
I don't just keep anybody else on.
I'm trying to.
I do, okay.
Yeah, can you approve me? I'm just gonna see what it looks like.
Yeah, so I have two participants, which is me and Emma and TV up, so.
You don't see me out there?
Her computer thinks you're the host.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, I'll admit a few folks here then. Got it. There we go.
There we go.
Brad, can you hear us? One thing is. Carrie, are you still muted?
I'm muted on mine.
Okay. Minute ago ahead.
It shows that the mic is working on, on that one up there, so.
Brad's muted. Here's now Brad. In the volume up. Are they unmuted?
He's not muted now, so we should maybe be able to hear him if. If I believe.
And that speaker's on.
Yeah, a little bit ago, I was.
Muted, no, his camera's off, he's unmuted. He can hear us.
He can.
But we can't hear him. Hey Brad, I'm gonna have you on speakerphone.
Yeah, thanks.
We're in a new, different building, so who knows? We still have a bunch of bugs to work out. So, um, we're gonna do the, the bank stabilization first. That bid award. And I'm gonna turn this over to Dave. I have a conflict on that one, so. Go ahead, Brad.
Looks like we've, you've made a decision here or a recommendation.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I know. So, so. I'm gonna switch over to, to my microphone. I think I figured it out. Hang on.
Can you hear me over the microphone?
There we go, yes.
Okay, I'm hanging up.
Yep, there's less than half the interview's estimate. That seems, uh.
Yeah, it is. I, I really struggled with what the rip rap was gonna cost. Um. You know, you know, what I do is, you know, I use some average bid items kind of from the DOT and others and, and their costs are all over the place. So. I was just nervous about this one and I, and I, I had it, but, but you know, the, the source is fairly close. We had a lot of competition. Um, I think we got just excellent bids.
Okay, yeah, I can see that, that counts for that. Most of that discrepancy there, yeah.
Yep.
Well, great.
I entertain a motion to accept the bid or. Move to approve the low bid for suck up construction. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Too many.
Okay, perfect. And Carrie, when you, when that's all signed, if you could just scan that to me, I'll get the contracts going.
Yep, I'll be back.
Here's the statement. I guess that was two ninety eight, nine, two hundred ninety eight thousand, nine hundred twenty eight dollars. And then Brad, we've got a final order, final pay application and change order for. Asphalt surface treatment from Aztec, I believe.
Yes, and, and that's just closing the project out.
A little bit of savings there.
Yeah, nice.
On the. Final pay, it looks like. You saved what fifty two thousand else? But moves to approve that change order and final payment. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion passes. They had signed in our spot.
Signed in the wrong spot?
They did. No, not you. No, the. I think the asked to. Help you do.
Brett, that pile of rock has been down by Tabernacle. Is that for some other?
No, that's for that. That's, uh, we brought it in, so, uh.
That's been there for.
Complete excavation, so they get underneath the, use that part of base, get underneath the. Underneath that bridge where we had that bug, yeah, going all the way across, so. And some halting, we're gonna have to do that, right? And then we just kept it there for. To continue on with the preparations.
Is, is a Tim, Tim Gregor doing some stuff north of that too? Cleanup or something?
I couldn't tell you for sure.
North on the familiar.
North on the.
Do you have anything else, Brad?
No, no, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna drop off.
Okay. Uh, then we've got a discussion regarding the yield sign. Near the Beckland facility on three thirteen and four fifty six. And I put, had this put on. Um, how we did the resolution for the stop signs on the north corner. In the north corner, in the. East corner. Three thirteen, I think we need a yield sign going east on three thirteen. We had a. We expected the traffic to come out of. The elevator on the three thirteen and then go north or go south on four fifty six back to highway fifty, well. More traffic's coming off the hill. And come across in three thirteen, so when they leave the elevator, they're just going right through. The intersection, because there's no stop sign. So people, neither people are, you know, stopping at either corner. So we better give somebody the right of way. Hey, it's cause the stop signs. Are. Are, are north and south, right?
No, no.
No, I'm sorry, yeah, no. There.
Coming south and.
Yeah, come off the oil, come across that gravel, get around to the stop sign. And, uh, on four fifty six. If you're coming from the north head south to three thirteen, there's a stop sign there. So it's.
Okay. Well, yeah, hey, finally be bored. I can do that.
We got a permanent market that I can run.
I don't think we do have a market. Anyway, have to check them out at the front.
Great idea.
Here's how it is now. And there's a stop sign here, so. So traffic going this way stops, traffic going from, coming from the north stops. I think with the elevator being here. We put that yield sign here for this traffic. That way, that still gives this the right of way. So when they go that way. They still have to. Have to yield.
If, if there's still a crop in that northwest. Portion of your map.
Yep.
That's a blind, that's a bad. Yes, so that's a good idea.
So somebody needs, I mean, somebody needs to yield here.
Yeah.
Yeah, agree. Yep, I was using, we were all in our own truck right in front of me, so I was like. Somebody needs to. You know, this needs to be changed.
They should, yield to the right of wave.
Well, let's make it a best. Yep, that's how it's supposed to be, but they're not, so.
Do you want a motion?
Uh, I think we'll have to wait till the next meeting. This was just a discussion, we don't have a resolution yet, so. And it makes sense to me, yeah. And they're. Their fault, so they're, they're not taking. Anything out there right now, so. It's not a big, big panic, but we'll get it done next meeting.
I can see that, uh, in the bluff road down there, that's. Big problem.
Yeah. How's it all rolled up so far?
Not too bad. There are some, some spots.
Yeah. No, we should probably put that on the next week's discussion. You know, what, what to do with the road.
Okay.
Thoughts only.
Okay. Hey. As long as we're on Brent's, I had a. I know we discussed that for no hunting signs on that little strip. Tim rode last time.
Yep.
Do we need to put that on agenda two for?
You can. I suppose we have to, don't we, to post?
Yeah, we better. I don't know if he adds to next week's agenda.
We'll just put that on next week.
Okay.
Anything else?
Uh, I've been, I was gonna talk to you guys about, uh, having considered staying on a four ten year round. Uh, I just feel like, uh, we get more done. You know, by the time you get it quickly ready, get out, start doing stuff. Get more done in a day than you already did earlier. Just wondering how you guys feel about that? And I was. Thinking like, um, like Thanksgiving and like Christmas, when we get like a few extra days, uh, like those weeks, we just go on an eight hour day, so that way we just. Stayed dealing with everything, so we. Getting like, you know, get two days off for Thanksgiving, that way we just work in Monday, they got Tuesday, Wednesday off. Just, uh, wondering how you guys feel about that.
I don't have an issue with it.
Yep.
I should get it worked out.
Yep. Yep.
And I talked to Brent yesterday about it and, uh, my only concern was. As long as they're. Willing to be fluid on it. You know, like you said, there's a snowstorm coming, that week might be five eights.
Yep.
Yep, and like I told, it's like, well, you probably put in twelve, fourteen hour days, those days that if we can.
Yeah.
If we can minimize the overtime.
Yep.
Snowstorm's always a part of the fluidity, so, you know, so.
It's gonna snow Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, then winter, and so that way Friday ain't all day overtime. And I talked to the guys and everybody's good with it, so. Long as you're good with it.
Yep.
We need a motion on that, or is it just gonna go?
We'll have to. You know, in the, I don't know how Michael wants to do it. In the past, Rod's just informed us how. When they were going to four tens.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate. I mean, he is an employee of, you know, he's the department head while you guys are technically his boss. So long as that's authority, that's. You guys are comfortable granting to him, and it appears historically that has been granted to him, then I would take this as an information sharing. Uh, I think that at some point, if you wanted to. You know, pull the reins back a little bit, you have that authority as well, but if that's how it's been handled in the past and you're comfortable continuing on that, that's, that's the precedent, then really I would treat this as. Him informing the commission rather than asking the commission.
That's how it's been done, hopefully, you know. The only time we'd have to address it is if they have to random them.
Thank you.
You didn't want us to sing Happy Birthday to Weaver?
Oh, where is it?
Wait, wait, let's get that.
Uh, what else do we have here? Scott, facilities.
They're not dirty, they can't be dirty.
It's a new building, it can't be dirty, can it?
Oh, will be eventually. Contracted from towels and mops for here.
Oh, there's just no ongoing, what is this, uh?
It'll be for two years.
Oh, nevermind.
Beyond gone. And then here's another two years, Michael will take it out ourselves. Kinda want to do. We do have a laundry facility. Haven't really worked out the nuances with that, with, uh, share and everybody, so. I figured for now we'd go with this. Explore that, uh, opportunities we get into here a bit more. Their timeframe is and stuff.
Can everybody get to see this?
Is this in the bucket? No.
So it's a, a rental service and then those are the rates for the total quantity that you have rented for them per?
Yeah, that could go down. It can maybe over order a little bit this. Case, you know, we're under. We get into, if we don't need that much, we just.
So like the towels and the mops, do you, do you launder those then yourself?
No, this is a rental contract, they take them up, they did loan.
So we say we want, say like a thousand towels and that's the charge to have a thousand towels for two years and then they may change them to that period and it looks like there's some additional. Uh, like kind of insurance where if we pay a little bit extra, then. We're not.
They'll just replace it and get charged for.
This is better than building.
Maybe not. But I figured from now on, yeah. I wanna, I wanna explore that option.
Okay.
As we have, like I said. Nice laundry facility.
Yep.
I've seen that, we can use it, so. Yeah, so that's my goal is to finish it now. But I kinda wanna get going here first before it. Make any drastic changes.
Wishes on the rental contract?
You have a guess on what the, I had no idea what quantity of those things we need. I think it was like fifty rags and. Twenty and five, twenty six, a lot of mops and six dry mops, something like that.
Okay, so we're not. This is four dollars in towels, wow. All right, yeah, I move to approve.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Veteran Services Resolution for Operation Green Light Participation. You're in or are you going to? Resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty nine, resolution adopting Operation Green Light. Whereas the residents of Clay County, South Dakota have great respect, respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all those who have helped us to serve our country. And this community and the armed forces and. Whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Clay County seeks to honor individuals who have made sacrifices for freedom. By placing themselves in arms' way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion. Veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, volunteer organizations, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in twenty nine states. The health, fellow former service members. Access more than fifty two billion in federal health disability compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately ten percent of residents of Clay County are veterans. And whereas studies indicate that forty, forty four to seventy two percent of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk of suicide during the first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas Clay County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel, and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now, therefore, any resolve with designation as a green light for veterans counting Clay County. Hereby declares November fourth through the eleventh, twenty twenty-five, as a time to salute, honor the service and sacrifices. Those transitioning from active service. And be it further resolved that in the observation of Operation Green Light. Clay County will have green lights inside the offices of the courthouse and safety center at night. And be it further resolved that Clay County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition. To recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices. To preserve freedom by displaying green lights in the window of their place of business or residence from November fourth through the eleventh. Twenty twenty-five. Due to this twentieth day of October, twenty twenty-five. I move to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five twenty-nine.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Just wanted, uh, to. Ask, uh, what's the easiest place to get green lights around town, for anybody that's here with them?
Um, so for residents, I would say probably go on Amazon, um. Get a couple tags. Or some sort of Walmart or Ace. Anywhere that kind of sells light bulbs, you're gonna get the LED ones. Um, just. Relatively cheap. So. I know I didn't reach out to the city of Amelia, they're gonna be changing their lives on the main street to green. Uh, on the trees, and I reached out to B C P C, and they're making a publication. For all the businesses to also dissipate, so. I know it, this is, uh, just because I transitioned out last year, it's kind of a. Nice little. Alley, so.
So is this something we should probably agree every year, then going forward, so we, so next year's resolution can just be an ongoing one?
Yes, sir.
So we don't have to.
Say it again.
Do it every year?
Yeah. Yeah, well, like I said, um, one of the big things is the, the big transition is. Going from having life insurance to not having life insurance, and veterans have a hundred and twenty day window to tran- uh. Take their military life insurance, which is twenty-five dollars a month. To make it civilian. That's five hundred thousand dollars, and a lot of veterans forget to do that, so it's kind of a nice way to say, hey. Come on in office, we can do the paperwork. You still have life insurance. It's kind of a, you know. Hoops to jump through civilian side, where this one is just. Yeah.
That's just stupid, there should, there's. Many people's the government hires, someone should do that for them.
Correct, you know, and it's not automatic switch. Us and the veterans have to do it ourselves. And being able to help. Others do that.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, and thank you for highlighting that specific. Specific item, okay, appreciate that.
Any further other discussion? Hearing on roll call?
Montclair.
Yes.
Braylon.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Izzy.
Yes.
Gilbertson.
Yes. Motion passes. Let me, discussion of very plenty is on commission.
I think it's brought in guys, the, the ordinance. Um, that we're looking at, we're not voting on it today, it's just, I wanted to put it in front of you guys, so you have time to look over it. And it's available to the public, it was published.
We'll have this on probably the next agenda as the place.
Yeah, that is supposed to be first thing this next agenda, like, and I just wanted to give it to you guys, have the time to read over it.
Thank you.
Good, thank you, anything else?
Uh, J J Z's going well. Pretty much it.
We had a first meeting.
Yeah.
The small committee.
Had or?
This, we did, we did it.
Yeah.
Yep, the sixth of our next one.
And that should be pretty much the. Should be. Last small group meeting.
I'm not gonna pay for that. Thank you guys for working.
Thank you. Andy, in main contracts?
Yeah, do you have company rules?
Yep, this is the, um, we talked about it, I think in the last meeting or a recent meeting where we. We opted to set, uh, Lincoln and Turner Counties are basically maintaining the current contracts, uh, where their, their rate is seventy dollars a day through the rest of this year. Uh, with their rate changing to ninety dollars a day. Uh, January first. And, uh, so I just drafted the contracts up, or just amended the existing contracts. So that take effect, so we can send it to their commission for approval prior to January one. And then all other counties will be ninety, well, right now they're all set at eighty, my understanding is January one, you'll set our, our rate to ninety for all other counties, unless you want that to be immediate, but. It's, I'm just working, working on the contracts right now.
So would we, uh, move to approve this contract language?
Yeah, if that's okay with you, and they're both identical, except Turner and Lincoln, obviously, is. You know, the only difference between the two.
It will be probably separately, so I, I moved to approve the Lincoln County, uh, Adult Detention Services contract.
And to go.
Should I just do both of them, Michael, or?
You can do both.
Okay, Lincoln and Turner.
Yep. Second, have a motion and a second for the discussion. Hearing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? Motion passes. Anything else?
Uh, no, I was gonna mention Turner, Lincoln County's got four inmates ready to bring to us when they're ready, of course, I'll be at the old rate, but. So they're ready to start using us as soon as we're ready to take them, we have. We have inmates in house, we have all of our inmates here except one that we still have to go get this week, that's a little farther away. Um, anyway, we brought them all back from, uh, Union County yesterday. So we're up and running. Holding court, good feeling? Yeah. Yep. Yeah, there's, uh, you know, the only problem is there's still tiny bugs that we're working out, and now with inmates in there, it's a lot harder. Because all the doors are locked, and we have, can't put inmates, and some of our housing units aren't available yet. We'll work those out.
So how many do you have? To start?
I think there's about ten in there right now, and then we gotta bring in another. I can, I got to check the roster, so roughly ten right now. We'll get those, uh, we'll let Lincoln County bring theirs in yet this week. And I'm working on a contract with the Marshes, but still very prelim- preliminary on that.
Sounds good, yeah, I saw. Inmate boarding and the, uh, and the vouchers, and I was hopeful, maybe that was the last one, but we'll have at least one more of those on there, so.
Yeah, we'll close out with, uh, Union County, and then Davidson County, still got one, we'll get him on there.
I like that the, uh, the new voucher setup has got the running totals on there, so it's nice to be able to see that we, you know, had a four hundred thousand dollar budget lying in there, it looks like we're coming in at more like about. What was it, something like two forty or?
Yeah, which is good, because we're spending that on staff.
Yep.
That's probably a little shit. We're not saving money, no. Not wasting.
That's how, uh, remember you folks authorized hiring the, the jailers early so we can train them, and it was based on savings on that line, so hopefully it comes out. Um, and I'm glad we did hire, it took us a while to hire that many jailers and train them. In the process of hiring, we lost one, and then to hire another, so. It's been some work, we're fully staffed now. We have two of them still in their field training, and with certification training to finish, but. We're getting them.
So that, that total it is settling out, too, is that about like what you were expecting it to be, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, we're doing, doing pretty well on that.
Nothing else?
No, I was, if you're interested, I was gonna report the kitchen's in operation, oh, some of it's here, they cooked for us yesterday noon and supper. And then all three meals today, so they're up and going.
That little piece of cake I had at the opening, pretty good.
Yeah, they've been bringing us cake now, and then they, they're practicing.
Uh, vouchers and payroll, did I get to see those? We did, I'll entertain a motion, move to approve vouchers and pay them out. Second. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Unassigned funds held for building improvements. Four hundred fifty-five.
This is more of a, a housekeeping item, um. Should have probably done it earlier in the year, but with the software transition, I just haven't gotten around to it. Um, so this is the money that we had set aside for, for building projects, um. We've all gone through it now, so, um, we just need to unassign. Um, in order to. Essentially get that. Back. To cover the expenditures. That we've had for other things like the elevator and, you know, the other building projects.
Could you explain that just one more time, I'm, I'm sorry that I.
So we have that money kind of set aside, um. Assigned, it's the proper accounting term. And, um, so then after. You know, you've expended those funds, then you need to unassign it. So that it just kind of washes essentially, it, it takes it out of that little category and puts it back, just in the general fund.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
So that it's not set aside anymore.
I keep it out checking for savings.
There you go. That was a nice move.
Yeah.
Uh, I moved to, uh, uh, unassign the funds held for building improvements, uh, due to expenditures. Approximately four hundred fifty-five thousand.
Second, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? Motion passes. Resolution for contingency transfers, we've got Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight. Um, the County Board of Commissioners transfer of funds of an. Unanticipated expense from current budget here from the Commissioners Contingency Fund. Three thousand to judicial for catastrophic legal fund pool. Seventeen thousand to human resources. Sixteen hundred to community health nurse, payment to state. Three hundred and sixty dollars to the historic preservation.
And these are typical at the end of the year, um. I just kind of tried to get a little head start on that, usually we do a bunch of them in December. But as I was looking over the budgets last week, I decided just to get some of those done.
Move to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five twenty-eight.
Second. Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing on vocal.
Montclair.
Yes.
Braylon.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
T Z.
Yes.
Gilbertson.
Yes. Motion passes. Everybody gets to see the department monthly reports, will you? Hearing on that, uh, anything for Clay County Park? Uh. Nothing new, uh, they appreciated, uh, our work on this end to get everything together for the, for the chat, and, uh, I, my understanding is that we did that is all signed. So. Building project updates. Don't have anything for this one anymore. The new one, they started yesterday, correct? Remodel?
Yeah. Were you there yesterday at all?
I just went right at eight o'clock, just to check things out, but yeah, they were. Gonna get their fencing up and. Get cracking, start. Turn, uh, concrete down, so.
It's noisy. I, uh, I wasn't in the office yesterday afternoon, I had a sick kid, but. My staff said that it was noisy, and I said, expect it to get worse.
Locking concrete, yeah, quit.
But hopefully that demo is the first part, I, I don't know what their timeframe, I can't remember a week or two, hopefully. Yeah, within a couple of weeks, that high level of noise, uh, that's affecting the courthouse won't. Continue for the duration, so.
Yeah, some. Some system's still operating over there that we've still gotta work on getting out, and then, um. We got some systems still to bring up here, so we're not quite done here, Beck and Howard's gonna be on site here for. Through today, then they're leaving. I hate to see, but. Still working with it a little bit, but. They're, they're doing some work for us yet today. We got Erickson's on site here, doing some of this IT for us, we're, we're still lacking our tele type capability. And then, uh. Hopefully have that today, and then our. Our car camera stuff is still gonna come over. We got a little ways to go here, yeah.
On the old building, I'll say, I also appreciate, we had, um. Thursday was a big moving day. Glenn came, worked all day, uh, on just moving. Furniture, you know, that was, it was a big move, we had some students, athletes come, but there, I think there was some confusion on who was supposed to be their win, so the afternoon group that we were hoping to have to move all of the items that were staying. Into the Sallyport, didn't show up. Um, so we had some other department heads, like Noah helped out quite a bit that day, um, and we even had, uh, eventually. Andy and Crystal both sent some of their staff to just kind of finish the work that we needed to get done when we didn't have the folks we expected, so. Appreciate the help from everybody involved, because. We needed to get it done pretty quickly, and we did, just took some time.
Thank you, guys.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you put Glenn on that committee, and then I don't know if he realized that he's gonna be doing, utterly moving, tearing apart lockers and.
Just one more move in my life.
He's on the R F E committee, and the next thing you know, he's moving furniture.
They didn't read the job description, so that's all their duties assigned at the bottom.
Oh. Your deputy asked me that, he said, did you know you're gonna do this when you're in for a commissioner? Not a clue. Wasn't planning on this, but, oh, thank you.
Anything for joint jurisdiction, Dave? No, because we had the first meeting, everything went well with the city. It's good discussions. Good. Any other commissioner reports?
Well, I, I was gonna share that, um, so, uh, Dick Hammond had done an Ollie class, uh, asked the commissioner Ollie class for several years, and he asked me if I'd be willing to take it over, I did. And this, uh, we had that one a week ago Monday, I think there's something like fifteen, fifteen, sixteen people, uh, came. And, uh, had some good questions, primarily, we went over, um, what all the, the county's response, county commissioners responsibilities are, kind of what the departments are, which ones are elected, which ones are right under us.
Did you tell them moving furniture?
Moving furniture, yeah. I wish that I would have had that, the list was pretty long, but I did not have that on there, uh. I wanted to, uh, make sure to, to thank Carrie, about half of our discussion was going over, uh, a nice simplified packet that she, she produced about the county budget. Um, nice breakdowns on where funds go with kind of a, from a pretty high level view, and, uh, there was a lot of good feedback on that, it was very helpful to people. And it is available at the auditor's office for anybody who's watching, it wants to just have a nice, high level view of where, where do your county dollars go, um, where do, where do your, uh, yeah. Taxes go, so. And, uh, they had enough, good enough time that, uh, after the hour conversation, they said they wanted to talk more, so, uh, they asked me to sign up for one for the spring, so I'm gonna. Do another, another Ollie class on ask your commission this spring, so.
Any other reports? Hearing on, do we have executive session?
I have one.
Oh.
I know.
Wow.
Only one, there you go.
Andy, you're gonna have to sum home.
Yeah.
Uh, before you shut, that's going to, uh, dash three.
I was gonna say, I'm waiting for Kevin.
Eric, can you sit, do you put people in waiting area?
Um, if I reclaim posts, I think I can, yes.
Okay, well, we have to move to go in first, before we can. Pick anybody up, move. Move to go into executive session for twenty dash twenty-five subsection three.
One twenty-five two subsection three.
One twenty-five subsection. I don't have my notebook. On the second? Second. Motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign for the executive session. Step next door. If I can, I'll come in if I can.
Like that.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, abortion, if I have an executive session? Oh, move. Second, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign? We're in regular session. If there's nothing else, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Did you want to give up one more? Visitors to be heard.
Oh, it's bigger, I mean, it looks like it's.
Aina is the only one on there.
If there are any visitors to be heard, now.
Yeah.
Okay, now I'll entertain.
Yep, move to adjourn.
Second, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. We're in.